Good morning. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this special council meeting of the Jackson City Council. Today's date is September fourth. The time is currently ten oh one AM. Uh, colleagues, we're gonna start with, uh, the discussion item, which is council deliberations.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, I have a motion. I move that this meeting conclude for two hours, twelve o'clock. Um, it's important that we set the tone that we'll take care of business. But we don't want to treat council members' time as though it's not important. If we put a time that we're gonna stop this meeting, then I think everybody will move swiftly to bring up the issues that need to be brought up. We won't be fussing and fighting and back by, I think, a two-hour limitation for today. Now, we'll meet again on Monday. We'll put us at the, at the place we need to be, and I so move it.
I asked him moving properly, second. And the questions or comments, colleagues? All right, hearing all in favor? All right. I'm gonna abstain, 'cause you know, I like to have short meetings anyway. You know, I'm never the one to hold up a meeting. All right, so that motion passed, we'll be out of here by twelve o'clock. Hell or high water, right?
Right.
All right, so we're gonna start with, uh, discussions, colleagues. Um, on deliberations. Are there any questions or concerns about this budget that, that you all would like to have addressed? Is anybody, you're, you're representing City Legal, right? Is there anyone here from the, Brandon? Uh, what about Mr. Melon Becker, is he coming?
Yeah, they, they next door.
Oh, they're next door, all right, thank you.
President?
Uh, Ms. Brown Thomas?
Good morning. Um, I have a quick issue with the budget in reference to fire and police department. In reference to the amount of cars that they, uh, will be buying. They need more cars, and I think that we need to find a little bit more money to get them some cars for our safety. And for how the fire department, um, the buildings are.
So, let's look at, uh, JPD first. How many cars they say they were budgeting for?
They were budgeting for eight, eight, for like four hundred, and I think it was sixty-three.
Okay.
And eight cars is not gonna do anything for them. I know they have grants. Is there someone here that can discuss about the grants that can also be applied? Or if, um, they can find more money to try to get them more cars? Four hundred and thirty-seven, eighty-two.
Uh, Michael Allen Captain, professional standards. Uh, with the, for the grant fund and some of the JAG grants, we'll fund for police vehicles, but the money is usually around three hundred thousand, so it's around four. And sometimes those grants are specific to what those vehicles can be used for.
Okay. And is there any more grants that we can apply to? I've seen in the past where it was other grants that was applied for vehicles for the police department?
Uh, some of the CG grants, um, that we currently have right now, uh, that we are looking into other funding sources for vehicles. And there's, uh, Chief Jones stating, we are looking into the enterprise vehicle lease program. We had a meeting with them two weeks ago, and we're waiting for them to get back with us with the numbers of what that actually looks like to fund the program.
Okay, all right. And also, I would like to add more, add more into parks and ricks, and also the living.
Uh, Ms. Brown Thomas, let, you, you mentioned fire department. What was your concern about the fire department? So I got more cars for JPD. Mr. Bell and Becker, you right on time. More cars for JPD. And what was that for the fire department?
Um, their living condition, trying to find funds to fix up their fire stations.
Do you have a, a monetary value in mind?
They have to tell what else they need for that, I don't.
Okay. All right, what were your other concerns?
Um, parks and ricks.
Okay.
And public works.
All right, what about parks and ricks?
Um, probably need to put a little more funds in parks and ricks for our parks, and.
Do you have an idea in my, a, a, a number in mind?
I'd say about another fifty.
Fifty thousand? And what else you have?
And public works.
Okay. What about public works?
Um, need a little more funds in public works in reference to all the conditions that we have in the city.
Now, uh, administration, I know that you had budgeted for, I know you got a plan for paving and.
Okay.
Bond, um, and some other things. Can, can you speak to that in terms of what the plan is and how much is going into paving? And, um, cleaning out ditches and. Address Councilman Brown Thomas's concerns.
Good morning, council members. Uh, Peter Tayweson, interim CAO. Uh, with respect to the forty million dollar loan that was recently taken out back by the, uh, State Development Bank, it's my understanding, uh, that we're gonna try and do several things with that forty million dollars, but all of them are gonna be related to public works. Part of it, I think, will be, uh, placed on some bigger projects where we are obligated, we being the city, to provide matching funds that haven't been previously budgeted. But there's also been discussion with the mayor and among the administration as to how we prioritize projects in each of the seven wards and target some specific things that need to be done, whether that's ditch cleaning, uh, replacement across drains, other smaller public works projects. So we intend to do paving out of that, some big projects, and then some smaller, uh, projects that make an impact where we're seeing flooding issues or other critical issues that need to be addressed. And we intend to do that from the forty million dollars. We have to bring that back before the council, obviously you'll have to approve that spending. It's not anything we can do without your approval. And then secondly, with respect to public works, we are in the process of itemizing all city-owned equipment we can sell, not JPD, not the seized vehicles, that's separate for them. Uh, and what we can do to auction that, to put money into new public works equipment. I can't report to the council, had a little bit of good news this week. Uh, in my meeting with Mr. Henneffin, there are at least a half dozen pieces of heavy equipment that he says that he no longer needs, that this, that the city can reclaim, those being a backhoe, a tractor, a lowboy, which is in good shape, a cab for that lowboy, and the, um, uh, it's a trailer that came, contains the camera equipment for scoping out lines. And so, uh, even if all of that is not workable or repairable, that's equipment we can auction and put towards getting new equipment as well. Thank you.
Now, you mentioned, uh, the auction vehicles. Can JPD use some of that money to purchase vehicles?
JPD can. What we're envisioning is two separate auctions. JPD has an auction of seized vehicles, uh, as well as any other items they seize. Occasionally they have basketball goals, things like that. Any money that they can recover from their auction of seized items or items that are no longer needed for cases, we would suggest putting that back into a budget for JPD vehicles. The other things we auction citywide, whether it's a broken desk, old computer, or a piece of heavy equipment, we're going to recommend or suggest putting in public works vehicles. So we're trying to have one path for police, one path for public works.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Brown Thomas?
No, thank you.
All right, uh, we're gonna go to seven and then work our way back down, if that's okay, colleagues.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Teweson and I have had some questions about the, uh, federal matching grants for our public works group. I'm looking at a list of projects now, MDOT projects now, and there's a long list of them that range in total anticipated cost between a half million dollars and thirty-eight million dollars. And it looks like a really great deal, because on each of these projects, the federal government is paying the vast majority of these, uh, of these projects with local matches being in the range of, say, twenty percent or even less in some cases. Uh, but this is all combined millions and millions of dollars. Now, we're not gonna be able to tackle that in one, uh, in one calendar year. But if we, if we agree to a project today, that might not come to fruition for three, four years where the money is due. So the projects that we're talking about now are projects that have already been committed to, that now it's time for us to pony up. Is there a calendar of how much we need to be paying in this fiscal year? Our local match, I, and the reason I ask, I wanna make sure we're not losing these projects, because we aren't providing our local match. How much money is due this fiscal year for MDOT projects that we've committed to previously? And do we have sufficient funds to meet those local contributions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you for that question, uh, Councilman, and, um, the exact amount of money that, uh, is needed in this upcoming fiscal year, I can't give you that, but we'll, we'll get that for you shortly. Uh, but we do know that we've got to make a commitment, uh, on the Mega Evers Boulevard project. That is a thirty-seven million dollar project. And, and, and let me back up. The total amount of, of, of federal projects that we've got, uh, before us right now is seventy-five million dollars worth of projects. Forty-six million is being provided by the Federal Highway Administration, which means we've got to come up with twenty-nine million dollar match. Most of that match concerns Mega Evers. Um, the, uh, the, that project is a thirty-seven million dollar project. And our portion of it is, is, um, seventeen million. So, uh, we've got to come up with that seventeen million dollar match or run the risk of losing the twenty million, uh, that the Federal Highway Administration is, is, is providing for us. There are a couple of ways we could, we can try to skin that cat. Uh, one is, is to put the bulk of, of a large commitment of that forty million dollar bond towards it. Uh, that is not, uh, as ideal as I would like. Uh, we are in discussions with, uh, the leadership at the, at the, uh, Senate. Uh, and to some extent, we've had some preliminary conversations at, in the House as well of trying to get, um, a commitment from the state to help us with that federal match. Uh, one example of how we could do that i- is to repurpose some bonds that have already been issued for projects in the city of Jackson that aren't going to be, uh, be done. For example, uh, the Western Hotel project. It's just from the Western Parking Garage project that's across the street from the Western Hotel. Probably isn't gonna be done, but those bonds are out there, and there's, there's a twenty million dollar authorization that's there. And the conversations I've had with, with the leadership of the Senate are that we could repurpose that twenty million and use it as a match potentially. So we're just trying to, to look at creative ways that we can, can knock some of this, this money down. That's a big one with regard to Mega Evers. Seven million of that seventeen million that we've got to come up with, uh, uh, is water sewer. And, uh, we, we're also in, in discussions, I understand that Jackson Water ha- has turned us down previously on utilizing some of their resources for that project. We're gonna continue those discussions to see if we can get down to a ten million dollar match that we've got to cover versus a seventeen million dollar match.
If I got, if I can add, council members, a couple of other comments. Um, Mayor tackled the big ones and the hard ones. Um, some of the match, council members, will be provided by the One Cent Sales Tax Commission. So this is not gonna have to be a hundred percent match coming out of the general fund of the city. Well, we've gotta do a better job of, in Councilman Parkinson, I think you've recognized this, is not committing to projects where we haven't also identified the stream. In other words, we shouldn't commit to a project without coming to you and saying to you, here's where we're gonna get the money. And if that's one cent, we should have already had the conversation with one cent at the time. So we fully recognize that. Something else we have to do, when you look at the match amounts, um, often the match ends up being more than originally thought, because the design gets out of control. Councilman Stokes? Fifty-foot wide bridge on MLK when thirty-five feet would do. And so we've got to do a better job internally of managing, if it's twenty percent matches, it's fine. But as the mayor just told you, we thought we had a limited match on Mega Evers of six or eight million, and now we're trying to figure out how to get seventeen down to ten. And so part of that as well is, we've gotta do a better job controlling our design and making sure that our engineers and our consultants don't spend our money for us before y'all really get a chance to make that decision. So, when you look at matches, realize it's gonna come from several sources, and we're gonna try and shrink that gap as well.
Okay, well, I, I think it's great that y'all have a plan, and we're not gonna be turning away these, these federal dollars. So I thank you for that. Uh, another thing that I'm wondering is, we had talked about, uh, re-establishing a grant of perhaps two hundred thousand dollars that organizations that are sponsoring events and sponsoring various activities can request funds. Uh, I believe it was initially in Human and Cultural Services, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and I wasn't sure if that money was reflected. If not, um, I will likely be making up an amendment to propose that we.
And that money will be reflected in, in the Human and Cultural Services budget.
Thank you very much. Um, those are my only questions, but I, I share, uh, Councilwoman Thomas's, um, uh, note on the patrol vehicles, the, the, a month that I'm looking at now says four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for eight vehicles. Um, you know, I, I don't think it's out of the question, double that amount. And so I, I think, um, looking at that, or at least upping it a little bit, is, is something that I.
Councilman Parkinson, uh, we're, we're putting, uh, we're putting pretty much a flat budget for equipment for the police department. Uh, the question for us is whether we, we change our, our habit of going, going out and buying vehicles versus leasing them. We can lease a whole lot more, uh, for the same amount it costs us to buy. And so we're leaning towards, uh, uh, going to that, that lease approach. And, and, um, and within the next, uh, uh, thirty, sixty days, we'll make a final decision about that, but we're leaning towards leasing, because the, the dollars will go a lot farther.
Certainly support a leasing option. I think, you know, looking at those makes a lot of sense. And I so greatly appreciate your team across the board bringing forward level funding. I, I appreciate that, it, it helps us out a lot. This is one area where I do think an increase might be appropriate.
Well, you know, we're, we're flying in the dark here to some extent.
Yeah.
We, we don't have audits done that need to be done. And until such time as we get our, our, our knowledge about what, what, uh, audits actually look like, we feel that the prudent thing to do is, is to come with as flatter budget as possible.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Stokes, oh, sorry, Councilman Hartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for being a few minutes late trying to come up with some last-minute figures here. One of my biggest asks is going to be, uh, first of all, for my ward, I got several things, but one of my biggest asks is going to be for public works equipment. Uh, Mr. Caldwell, I wanna give him a copy of it. Uh, he, and maybe there's some more here. Sorry, a couple more. Yes. And administration. Yeah. Think you got a couple of extra ones. Uh, one of the things, uh, as we look at cleaning up our city, uh, one thing that we do not have is the proper amount of equipment to in fact go into every street, uh, into neighborhood and, 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 and launch some type of maintenance, uh, blitzkrieg, uh, if you will. But the other thing is also blith, blith control. I, uh, coming up with this in consultation with, uh, Public Works Department, this is what I believe we're gonna have to get in order to clean up our streets, in order to cut the sides of the road back, in order to pick up the waste, in order to take everything to the landfill, uh, but to get some type of control. And right now, we, we don't have it, especially in West and South Jackson. So, to collect the waste, one additional boom truck, uh, and one roll-off truck. We have a bunch of roll-off dumpsters that can provide for neighborhood cleanups in addition to our projects going forward to clean up the streets. So one additional roll-off truck, seven skid steer packages. This is, we can put teams in each area, possibly in each ward. Um, we haven't worked out all that different strategies. But the skid steer package will include forestry mulchers that can go into abandoned properties and along the sides of the street and cut it down to ground level, everything. And so it won't have to be repeated as often as just a regular lawnmower. Uh, we can go in and we can talk with, uh, Secretary of State's office. They're supposed to be helping us out, uh, as far as putting money and, uh, uh, and different things into their budget for their, um, blighted properties. They have nineteen hundred. So I'm hoping that they will help us with this as well, forest equipment. Um, each package, again, forestry mulcher side and ground cutter, the sides of the roads, we'll be able to cut that down. The size, the trees growing out in the streets, we'll be able to cut those downs as, as well. And the larger limbs coming out, presenting a hazard, we're looking at a pole saw attachment, uh, as well. Uh, three sweeper attachments after the jobs, waste is transported. Then we can come in with a sweepers and clean up manicured area. Six diesel trucks, this will be to provide for, um, uh, for, uh, those cleanup efforts to, uh, to have the skid steer and other equipment on those, uh, to be, excuse me, to be pulled, uh, to use that with the trailer to pull all the equipment. Thirty-five hundred, uh, horsepower ram, uh, it's on state contract. We'll be looking at six of those at fifty-five thousand a piece, backpack blowers to a hundred dollars a piece. Uh, we have, we need an additional spray tank on the trailer. That will be for using herbicides. In some cases, we may not need as much, uh, equipment out there if we can just control, uh, the vegetation or growth using, uh, herbicides. Uh, one tractor, uh, and that again will be used in addition, especially on the, um, the sweepers to manicured areas. Six handheld hedgers, uh, six equipment trailers at a hundred fifty a piece, six dump trailers. Again, we're getting our waste out of the city. And I didn't include this into the estimate, but we need to, uh, because I was made aware that, uh, perhaps the mayor is looking into it, but a vacuum truck. Uh, total that we're looking on this plan is two hundred and two hundred and fifteen thousand, excuse me, two, two million five hundred. I got a number.
Where you put that number from? It's two million what?
Okay, it's that, that, okay. No, it's, uh, too many zeros, hand got a little heavy there. We're talking two million five hundred and nineteen thousand, but right at three million dollars with the back truck. But again, uh, the administration have some other way to get to it, that's fine. But we want to, this will put the equipment in our hands where we can clean up the city of Jackson. So I'm asking for, so we're in the neighborhood of three million dollars for all this. And, uh, this will help turn our city around from an aesthetic standpoint. Uh, in addition, Ward Five, uh, Councilman Stokes had brought up, uh, the one million dollars. I think that's very prudent, because we're gonna have to make a decision on the zoo.
One million dollars for it?
He mentioned one million yesterday for the zoo.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure we clear about.
Yeah, yesterday. Um, and I think that's a, that's a prudent amount. What I'm looking at is a management study. We have to get fundraisers out there. We have to get on top of, e- either we're gonna play or go home with the zoo. And we have to figure out which one. This one million will allow us to do, uh, uh, it allows us to do a management study, to, a strategic management study. What direction do we wanna go, what are our options? In addition, um, uh, part of it can be used to correct those, to demolish those houses along Capitol Street. We can put it in code enforcement. So now we can dress up that entire Capitol Street corridor, and we have equipment to do it. We can tear down houses. Uh, in addition, um, there's a few other things, maybe, uh, refurbishing the zoo. Uh, Councilman Parkinson had a, I believe, a good idea. He mentioned bringing the, the animals closer, okay? Uh, lowering the footprint of the zoo area for us, the, for the animals enclosure. People have to walk, you know, they have to walk a half a mile to see a, see an animal, they're gonna say, well, ain't nothing there. But if they see everything up close, then that will make a difference, I believe. Um, so that's what I'm asking. Uh, uh, any additional money would go into, I believe, for Ward Five. I want it going into the equipment budget and also, uh, the code enforcement budget for his house and property demolition. And I don't, not sure if my colleague Councilman Foot has anything, uh, plan on that, but, uh, we need additional money for demolition.
Mr. Mayor, you have any comments, administration?
I wanna speak to the zoo if I can. Peter Tayweson, interim CIO. First thing we're gonna have to do with the zoo is move the monkeys. We have got to stop hemorrhaging water that's leaking from the, the area around the monkey area.
Okay.
Um, I agree we need to study. I agree we need to right-size the zoo. There are plenty of small zoos that do extremely well. So I think all of that is important. But let me make this clear, because I'm sure Judge Wingate is going to watch this at some point. The first thing we gotta do is stop racking up water bills at the zoo with the leaks. There are a couple of leaks in the parking lot that we're already looking to repair. Those we think are feasible, we can do those within allotted funds. But, um, I've got near the top of my list of priorities, when we get to budget, meet with the zoo director and figure out what are we gonna do with the monkeys? So we quit turning on a fire hydrant to fill a leaking area and lose that water again. Number one thing with the zoo, if, if we don't stop losing money, we're not gonna have a zoo. And we figure the rest out after that, but we've gotta stop the bleeding of the money there. On the public works vehicles, uh, boy, I wish we had three million, y'all could give it to us, 'cause I think Councilman Hartley, I know you've worked with Mr. Caldwell, 'cause we've been discussing it as well. I, I think Mr. Caldwell has identified exactly the type of equipment this city needs. Uh, not anything extravagant, not anything extra. The question is, how do we get there? And I think that's gonna have to take several steps. One is the auction, I said, of earlier equipment. With respect to the back trucks, we're exploring leasing two back trucks as opposed to buying. These things are super expensive, then they break. So we're looking at an option, we just started this last week, uh, looking at leasing back trucks. started this last week, looking at leasing vac trucks with some sort of service plan as well, and seeing if that doesn't make more sense. So, we agree with you from, certainly, I'm saying this as interim Public Works Director, that this equipment is needed and will allow us to better obtain, better maintain our city. The question is, how do we get there? And it's probably going to take several approaches. I defer to the mayor for anything else.
President.
Sir.
Yeah, so, we have ordered two vac trucks that we're going to put under lease, as Mr. Taverson said. We had, we have three vac trucks right now. All of them are shot. One of them, however, is not in as bad shape as we thought, and we were able to get the the repair company that had that particular vac truck to put it at the top of their list and make the repairs. And we should have that that vacuum truck back on the streets by the first of the week for a cost of only eight thousand dollars. So, we feel real good about that. The other two are much more pronounced in terms of some of their mechanical needs. As it relates to the the two and a half million or three million, whatever the total of this is, we are in discussions with some people in the private sector who are concerned about the blight that we're experiencing in our capital city as well. And this list will help me better make the case, Councilman Hartley, to those those individuals, of some concrete numbers that we can show them what they what they can do to help us with that. Likewise, we're also, we have, are trying to beef up and consolidate our grant writing and grant make, grant pursuit activities to the point where we're trying to streamline how we're going after grants, figuring out what grants we've got, where they are, who's managing them, what the compliance issues are, et cetera. And are expecting to go after those foundations or even at the federal level, federal agencies that might be able to help us with our blight elimination. So, we're about to get very aggressive with that. We have a couple of requests out right now, and hopefully, we'll hear very shortly whether we're going to get any success there. But I hear what you're saying about the blight elimination and with those Jackson Water pieces of equipment that we've got. We've got a, an inefficient landfill system right now. We can't, we're running fiber to the landfill so that we can have internet service, so that we can use credit cards to be able to charge folks. It's a cash basis now, and we know that that's, that may be potentially rife with problems. So, so we're trying to get, get two cells opened up, and which means we've got to close out two. We got to make sure we don't get deemed by Department of Environmental Quality, because we don't have the equipment right now that is sufficient to remain in compliance with DEQ standards. So, we're going to take on a temporary basis that equipment that Mr. Taverson mentioned from Jackson Water and apply it to to the landfill there to make sure we're in compliance with DEQ.
Can I respond to one other thing about the back trucks? This is going to seem so obvious when I say it, but we've missed it. And part of this is because I spent a couple of days this weekend with Councilwoman Clay looking at a backed-up drain that needs a back truck. I've instructed Mr. Caldwell to get with our folks. We've got to figure out how to put debris retention screens in these crates. We're simply allowing too many plastic bottles and too much pine straw to get in there. And we're revacuuming or recleaning the same drains. And we think that's good, because, hey, we get out there once a year and we clean it out. I don't think we need to be solving the same problem more than once. And so, if we know there are particular drains that attract a lot of plastic bottles, either because of the slope or because people just want to throw them down there, or pine straw, we've got to keep that debris out. And it's much easier to clean that debris when it's around the storm drain where somebody pick it up than it is to go all the way down there. And so, when you look at the cost of a back truck, the answer can't be always get another back truck. The answer's got to be, there's got to be a less expensive solution to the problem that the back truck is tackling. Now, we need working back trucks, don't get me wrong, but I just want everyone to understand that we're looking for other less expensive solutions that ease the wear and tear on equipment we have. Grass cutting, we need to make sure when we're cutting grass, we're spraying after we cut grass. It doesn't make sense. We know how fast grass grows in Mississippi. We go out there and somebody will cut it, and then we don't spray any retardant whatsoever, and then we're surprised when three, four weeks later, you can't see again. And so, those are the kind of small things that I think you'll see from a management standpoint under Mr. Caldwell on Public Works in the next fiscal year that allow you to get more return for the dollars that you're investing. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Just on the the issue of of grass cutting and blight elimination. On Tuesday, the Heinz County Board of Supervisors assigned a approved unanimously memorandum of understanding that would allow the county and the city to work together on various projects. That item, hopefully, we're anticipating that that will have a companion MOU on this council's agenda this coming Tuesday. And once we get that MOU signed, we have resources to be able to buy materials for pothole repairs, for example. The county has the manpower. So, it seems to us that a happy marriage would be for us to buy the materials the county used materials to do pothole repair. So, we're going to be announcing that very shortly after the city council approves that MOU. We have four outside contractors, small contractors, that we're going to engage also for pothole repair. And we have the existing city crews. I understand there are only two city crews that do pothole repair. But but in the coming days and weeks, we, I think you can expect us to see a lot more activity as it relates to pothole repair and the MOU with the, with the county government. I think it's a good thing. I think it's going to help us to get work done just that, just that much faster.
I appreciate the comment, Mr. Mayor. On the back trucks, that was just something I do, it wasn't to spotlight the, you know, the, it adds a huge issue with public works.
It is a huge issue.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you, you all have been working on that. So, I'm more focused on the blight, okay? I know, I appreciate it, Stormwater, I'm Stormwater Train, I get it, okay? But, so, and I was told that you'll have a path for it, for the back truck. So, that's not my, really, the priority in my discussion. It's the blight elimination. We are losing streets. We are losing streets now. We're losing neighborhoods now. And we need to get this money for the equipment now. And I, and I'm really, I really don't think the people have the patience to wait until we go out and do this grant application and wait another three months, then come back, you know, the whole process. We need to find that money now in our budget, so we can go ahead and start ordnance equipment, so it can start getting in.
Right. Well, we thought that we had identified the money, and it was in our HUD allocation to CDBG. We have used two million, right at two million of the roughly, six million dollars for the retiring of the 108 loan. Then, we also acquired a fire truck that was much needed. And there were some other items that we, we looked at. Essentially, there's about two million dollars left in in the CDBG dollars. And what we found out is that we thought we could use that money fairly quickly, except that our consolidated plan doesn't speak to blight elimination. So, we'd have to go back out and and do public here and do an amendment and so forth. So, that's, that's the hand we've been dealt, Councilman. We're going to get to it just as quick as we can.
And I understand that. And that's, you know, that's my fear, is that we run into stuff like that. Meanwhile, stuff continue to grow, deteriorate, people continue to move out. So, my, my fear is, or what I'm trying to encourage is, immediately, let's look for that money and let's put it there, because these are basic city services. You know, this is, we should have been doing it alone, but we didn't, we weren't. These are basic city services.
We also thought that we could take some of that forty million that we were, we're just bond, are about to bond and use it on blight elimination. It's not allowable.
We can't do that.
You cannot do it. It has to be for for infrastructure or building repair.
That's because it's backed up by the
By the modernization tax, yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Hartley?
That's all.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and go. The Shaw Road Bridge in South Number Two has been out now a little over five years. And I would really, this is a major priority. I've been kind of talking about this since my first term began. I know that the city had already paid for the engineering, which I think was about sixty thousand dollars, but we need about three hundred thousand to make sure that that project gets complete. And so, you know, I really want to support this budget, and I would really, really love to see that in there. Also, two hundred twenty-five thousand for cameras and license plate readers. We budgeted a good amount. I'm not sure where all that money went last time. I would really like to see that back in this budget. We know that the cameras and the license plate readers, JPD really needs that. I think Capitol Police also helps to, you know, they really depend on that. And so, we, we know that virtual policing is a, is a major crime fighting tool in the city. And if we could find the money to put that in there to help JPD do what they do best, I would really appreciate that. Also, I noticed, and I brought this up the other day, for animal control, there's only about a hundred sixty-eight thousand budgeted for animal control. Last year, we changed it to four hundred and sixty thousand because we were trying to outsource animal control. I think all of us, all seven of us get phone calls about regarding animal control. Even one night, I got a call about a deer, a dead deer in front of someone else's house. And, you know, we called, called some, had some challenges trying to get that deer removed. But I think that we really need to boast up our, our animal control services, because as, you know, grass is growing and, you know, neighborhoods are changing, the animals tend to migrate into different areas. I know even out in Southwest Jackson, we had issues with foxes and coyotes at one point. So, we really need to boost up that. I do have a question. The last administration, we had a thirty million dollar loan that was taken out to deal with drainage in the Queens area. Are you familiar with that? Okay, Ms. Malinbecker, you familiar with that? And I think about twenty million was supposed to go into the Queens area to deal with their drainage issue?
Fidelis Malinbecker, interim CFO. I think you're referring to the state revolving loan fund that was acquired by the city, but once we transitioned with Jackson Water, that funding went to them, right? So, Jackson Water has been managing those SRF loans.
See, this is my first time hearing that, because, you know, folks will come to the meetings and say, you know, we're going to fix this and this and this with that money. But Jackson Water's been here, what, two and a half years?
Yeah.
Or so? And nobody's ever updated us on that. So, I appreciate the clarity, because, you know, like I said, folks are still asking about that. And again, this is my first time hearing about that, because they're waiting on that work to be taken care of. All right? Well, that's all I have. I'll move on to, yes, sir.
So, just one thing. I know animal control in the budget, it's about three hundred fifty-eight thousand.
That's somebody that has salaries, right?
Right, the, the entire budget. I know last, for this fiscal year, the wish was to outsource. And I think JPD was working on maybe trying to secure an RFP, but they still had to maintain some level of staffing, right? And so, that's why they continued to pay those employees. But if the plan is, you know, to outsource, ultimately, that funding would have to be transitioned to professional services.
How many animal control employees do we currently have?
Captain Outland. Michael Allen, Jackson Police Department, currently have four employees over there.
And what do they do?
They answer animal control calls. We just ordered some equipment for them for animal cages, catch poles, and they're getting cages installed on two vehicles to pick up more animals.
So, is there an agreement with like one of the no kill organizations to handle this kind of stuff also? No?
No, sir.
All right.
They're currently, they're working with Marl and taking animals there as well.
Okay. And I saw something in claims recently about veterinarians. So, do we cover the vet bills for?
No, sir. That's, that's probably our vet bills for our dog, our canine. We have to pay a bit medical bills on them.
All right. So, just to reiterate, the Shaw Road Bridge, the cameras and the license plate readers, those are major priorities of mine. Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Give me that, that amount on the Shaw Road Bridge.
Three hundred thousand. I think at one point, it was like two seventy-five, and it had been in and out of the one percent sales tax, commissions, meetings. I think Supervise Addiction at one point agreed to take care of it, but the money was pulled back out, and then it's just been in limbo. But I, that, that, again, that bridge is, is like, one is a eyesore, and I realize it is technically a rural area, but at one point, it served a major purpose for that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by thanking Budget Chair for a wonderful job. She kept information to everyone and I think she chaired it for the first time in a very successful manner. I also want to thank the mayor, who only been here since July one, for trying to create avenues to make things better and easier in this city, working with the county and everybody else. But the answer, everybody presented some very good suggestions. But the answer is one thing. We do not have money. We must merge departments to create some money. Appropriations is a big word at the state level, but this council can vote all night and day about money going here, there and everywhere. But if there's no money to go, there's an empty vote. I believe that we need to go back to the city paying one hundred percent of city taxes and seventy percent of the county tax. The mayor meeting with the county, try to get the county to do more is the right direction, because we are paying for Clint to have a first-class library, and hours are closed. It's city money doing that. Somewhere down the line, we cannot raise taxes. If the county raises taxes, we're going to have to reduce our mileage. We cannot show a tax increase in this county. If we show that, we're going to lose more businesses, because cities receive sales tax that the county do not. And as these cities leave, as these businesses leave Jackson, that's going to be less money that we'll have over the next coming years. So, it's important, as Mr. Taverson said about the bridge on Marlow to King, those engineers got paid a lot of money to give us some faulty information. I think they said to redo the bridge would have been maybe six hundred thousand dollars, so we had one point two to one point nine million. I said that to say this. With the population that we have, we never had this many department heads. We We grew as a city and that meant that we can have more department and department heads. People would not lose their jobs because those divisions would go other places. For example, right away, we'll go back to Public Works where it used to be. We must have a fire department, they have enough people on the trucks to stop endangering their lives. Something that we can't do that I wish we could, we need two police officers in the car, not one. But that's gonna take money. And the only way we're gonna get money is cut the fat out the budget. That's the only way. Everything we saying we wish we had, and we can vote it in. But you all understand that budget is on projections. If that money does not come in, then you can't pay simple things. These are projections. So when you start projecting and you had to make a decision that the mayor have to make, because once we get it out the, out this council hands, and he have to decide on life or death or somebody freeing, getting paid six figures, it's not gonna add up. So I'm here today, I say we have a meeting to twill. Because when we meet again, we understand that a lot of things we asked for can't happen, will not happen because we don't have the money. We got to hear from the mayor about reorganization. We got to reorganize this city. And you got to put public safety first, police and fire. People got to be safe. Then we decide what come after that. And again, I thank the chair for making sure we got all information, all the information. Thank the mayor for being here, what, two months, three months? July one and meeting within and everybody trying to get money from the state, the county and everybody else. But at the same time, if we're gonna do something in this city, they're gonna take us to twenty twenty-six. We got to cut the fat, ain't no way around it, I don't care how you don't like it. We got to merge those city clerks offices. That's a start. If we start here in City Hall, then others will start seeing it. You cannot have two city clerks offices. You didn't have two, you can't have two now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate Councilman Stokes' comments. And toward that end, uh, he must be a mind reader, uh, because um, we've already been having some internal discussions about how we can consolidate the eleven departments that we have down to seven or eight, at the at the most eight. Uh, but we're, our target is to get get them down to seven. And um, we think that we can uh, experience cost savings with that consolidation. Uh, and we'll be coming uh, before the council, uh, because it's gonna require some council actions. Uh, if we are going to do that, that reduction of of departments into uh, more streamlined departments going forward. Uh, and I also agree that that the reconsolidation of the clerk's office might be a good place to start. So uh, we're 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 working towards those ends and would love to have conversations with members of the council who might have ideas about the clerk's issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, um. We'll go with Ms. Clay.
Thank you. Uh, in my ten months that I've been here, I've seen a lot of contracts. I agree totally with Mr. Hartley's list of equipment. I agree with Mr. Stokes, we can't spend money that we don't have. And the whole time I've been here, I've been saying the city has no money. And I'm not saying that as a joke. I hope that the next budget hearings that we have will not be about cleanup and blight. Um, I have learned firsthand from the city about the drainage, the ditches, the roads and the potholes. In the last three months, I got a drain, a ditch in my backyard that is overgrown tremendously. This weekend, my dog got out, we had to get in that ditch and I got to see firsthand what the ditch is like. Secondly, I burst two tires on the city of Jackson's um, potholes. I used to say, don't talk to me about potholes. Now I see the need for potholes. So I hope our next budgets will not have to be concentrating just on this. That we can concentrate on amenities for the city. But in the meantime, I think Public Works needs all three million. And the way that I suggest that we get to getting them the three million is reducing contracts. We have contracts for everything. In the ten months I've been here, I've seen one point five plus million dollars for grass cutting, cleaning uh, streets, etc. If you got the equipment and you got the manpower, you eliminate one point five, so we got half of the money already. If we sell those cars that uh, Mr. Tivison talked about, um, you got the other part of the money. So we need to concentrate on giving money where money is needed. I want parks and ricks to have more money, but we don't need money if we can't drive on the street or our population doesn't grow and we have no taxes. So I'm in favor of Mr. Hartley, Mr. Stokes' thoughts on that. And I want the police department to have all the money in the world, the fire department in terms of living conditions, they do need more money. But I think we can find private sources for different things and work with different organizations and get the city to where it needs to be.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, anything? All right, Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. The uh, my amendments I'm proposing are based on needs that I I think the city has. The um, so my first amendment is to put ten million dollars for roads resurfacing across the city. The um, next amendment is to put one million dollars for upgrade and proper staffing of the city motor pool on Michael Avalon. The, I think that is a underutilized and um, piece of a city operation that uh, could vastly improve our, you know, vehicle status, equipment status, if it was properly manned and and there were, we were had the right staff there to take care of the vehicles, repair the vehicles. It looks like a graveyard for for um, for old vehicles, unfortunately, but it can be vastly improved, I think, with with um, attention. I'm not sure what department it should be under, but it sure, it needs to serve the whole city and all the, all the vehicles and equipment we've got. Uh, next amendment is to put three and a half million dollars to the zoo so they can pay their water bill at Jackson Water. That's something they need to do and it would improve our relationships with the um, folks at Jackson Water and Judge Wingate. The uh, the next amendment is to put five million dollars.
Miss Foot, Miss Foot, slow down, y'all got this? Okay, all right.
Okay. The next amendment is put five million dollars into facilities management to cover repairs that we need across our facilities to include the fire stations, which need lots of repairs, to include the legal office that needs H V A C, to include uh, lots of other repairs across there. If you have a, put five million dollars, when I first came to the council ten years ago, the maintenance line for the city of Jackson was three hundred thousand dollars with over two hundred facilities. That was laughable. And we raised it to a million dollars, that's still not near enough. So when 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 the H V A C goes out with the with the facility that that the legal department, they shouldn't be hassling with J R A, they need to come to the city and have it repaired within days. Not sitting here trying to find a new place to to move, that really undermines their productivity as lawyers. Okay. Uh, then, uh, the next one is to put five million dollars into the demolition budget for residential and commercial properties. This is back to the blight issue that Mr. Hartley brought about. Um, the, we've got to continue to do that. The the one thing I would say is that um, the the other, or an additional point I would make, or back to the facilities management. Valiumara Hall is the poster child for what a terrible job we do in taking care of our own facilities. It's embarrassing and it undermines the confidence that people have, both the the gov, other government officials and the and the citizens have in in the capability of city governments. We've got to get that fixed. Okay, but back to the next amendment, five million dollars in a demolition budget for residential and commercial properties. What I think this will do is will, uh, these matters here would really encourage and and build confidence at state government and the federal government that we're serious about fixing Jackson and doing the right things. And I think that will help open some of the spigots at state and federal government to get us more money to supplement the improvements that are needed. So that's my amendments based on the needs we have. I realize there's not that much money, right, you know, to vote all that in. But I think it's really crucial to understand our needs so that we can figure out solutions. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, colleagues? Yes, sir. Mr. Hartley?
Just one thing, um, uh, Councilman Foot and I, I worked with the Blight Task Force. We've met with Secretary of State's Office, but I'd like to meet with them again since the passing of laws uh, the first of July. One of the several laws, one added to their ability to provide money and maintenance for to clean up their properties. I'm wondering if we can't uh, if we can't balance it out, that they contribute. Uh, and perhaps we can use that money to clean up our own, to clean up all the properties. They they have nineteen hundred properties out there uh, in various state of decay. Uh, but I, so they have some responsibility and now they've changed the law where they can provide help. So I'm looking at, perhaps we need to have a meeting, I'm not sure, uh, mayor, myself and and uh, Councilman Foot. But we need to meet with the Secretary of State's Office, see in lieu of this law, how can we benefit? But I do believe that we need to have that blight controls and blight cleanup in our own, in our own house. Uh, but we need their money because it's their properties, so perhaps we can talk about that later.
Mr. President.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you give us the status of this jail situation? Uh, my understanding, they are in the process of, they're gonna charge the city so much for each inmate. And then I think it's a fee that's increasing if someone's sick or something else. But we reduce millage to create the jail. And it's not right unless they're gonna give us our millage, the money that we invested uh, in the jail back. Uh, again, the city of Jackson paying seventy percent of the county taxes on their jail and a hundred percent of the city taxes. And we getting taxed, 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 but nobody's giving us relief, even though they want to say, well, the most of the inmates are from Jackson. You know, it's like the library, again, Clint has library look like, they're like it's out of New York City. Then our libraries are closed, but Jackson paying for Clint library. So I want to go back to the jail issue because we're gonna get that seller, because my understanding, they plan on moving forward with the city having to pay. And if we are gonna have to pay, have we budgeted that money? Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, I will defer for for most of the conversation about the the jail arrangement uh, to uh, C A O Taverson, who in his role as uh, chief legal officer for the city at the time, I think this was done, speak more directly to it, but my understanding is is that uh, an arrangement was made several years ago uh, that um, the county now wants to change. And uh, we are not necessarily in favor of the of the change that's being proposed. But but uh, we we think that we've got a pretty ironclad uh, agreement that was reached several years ago. And and so, uh, we're gonna hold hold to our guns on that. Now, the issue of of the jail is is a serious one. Um, the sheriff, the chief sheriff um, uh, is at a point where uh, he's got about nine hundred and fifty post houses at at the uh, the county detention center. And he's he's running out of room, the county does not have the ability to continue to house prisoners in Tallahatchie County. Uh, there are um, a hundred and fifty uh, prisons that are being housed uh, from arrests by Capitol Police. And uh, we've been in in discussions with with the state about taking those folks who've been charged with crimes and who are remanded to our jails and put them in jails that would be supported by the state. Uh, we're hearing that it's going to be twenty twenty-eight before the new jail is built. Uh, and and uh, that's that's a couple of years from now. And so, so we we we're gonna run into a a major crisis in terms of how we house prisoners in our our situa, in our system. The other side of that is the adjudication of prisoners. We are not seeing enough prisoners come up for trial, uh, have their cases heard and a a uh, an adjudication uh, come out of that. Uh, folks are staying in jail too long before they come to trial. And so our court system and our district attorney's office has the most of responsibility as it relates to that. Uh, there probably is a a real need for everybody concerned about about these issues to sit get, to sit around the same table and try to come up with with some some viable solutions. Because what's what's, what is before us is not working. Uh, I'll say that um, to Councilman Foot's comments, um, uh, we, when you look at the amount of money that's being dedicated by the Capitol Complex Improvement District, you look at um, the one B and one C uh, plans for streets resurfacing, street repair that I once the sales tax commission is doing. When you look at the uh, forty million dollars in bonds that we we're about to issue, uh, a significant amount of which is gonna go for street repair, it it, it goes well beyond ten million dollars. And and it's not gonna get us entirely where we we need to be, but but I think we'll we'll see some substantial improvements in the the quality and condition of our streets and as well as pothole repair coming coming months. The motor pool upgrade uh, is uh, an excellent idea. Uh, one of the issues I hear that that we're challenged by is finding mechanics uh, that that will stay on the job and 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 uh, we we need to staff that that facility up, upgrade it, get rid of all the 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 stuff that surround that facility, because it does look uh, look atrocious, in my opinion. Um, as it relates to the zoo, I've said before that we either gonna have to shut the zoo down or we're gonna have to build the zoo up, one or the other. It's it's, we can't continue to spend one point two million dollars a year and take in eight hundred dollars a month. Uh, that that those those economics just will not work. We have the ability to use our tax credits to help improve the zoo. Uh, we have the opportunity for new market tax credits at the state and federal level, historic tax credits at the state and federal level, and opportunity zones uh, funds uh, at the federal level. And if if we're going to to do it, we need we need someone, a a developer partner to come to us and and say, look, we we want to uh, put something together to save the zoo. I think that there are other amenities that can be added to the zoo that will make it much more attractive. And uh, we have had some conversations with the Goodness Project uh, that is over in in West Jackson to uh, possibly uh, to the point where they may want to spearhead an effort uh, with regard to the revitalization of the zoo. The uh, facilities uh, are money, the five million is is an admirable um, amount to shoot for. Uh, I don't see five million in this budget, but but we're gonna get 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 to it as best we can. And our top priority there is the uh, facilities that our firefighters are having to um, to endure uh, while they're on the job, uh, helping to save our lives in any event of fire. Uh, and then um, the demolition budget, uh, again, an admirable effort. We're gonna be looking more toward the private sector for for those kinds of funds, uh, as opposed to trying to find it in this budget. Uh, Mr. Taverson, would you speak uh, more uh, directly to the Heinz County Jail situation?
Just so everyone has the background there, two uh, key events that occurred in the last thirty years that the council needs to be aware of. One is what Councilman uh, Stokes has referenced. In the early nineties, when it was decided to build the jail in Raymond, there was a deal struck when Maredito was mayor that the city would reduce its millage by a couple of mills and the county would in turn increase its millage by the same amount that the city reduced its millage. The thought being that that would generate enough countywide to. The thought being that that would generate enough countywide to maintain the jail. And so the city took that action in good faith and reduced its millage. Fast forward about a dozen or so years later, the county was complaining that they didn't have enough money to raise the jail, instigated some litigation with the city of Jackson. This is circa two thousand five. And that was resolved in two thousand seven via an agreement that was approved by the Attorney General's Office as well as a chance for a court judge by, where the city play pays a flat amount every year to help maintain Henley Young. And in return for helping maintain Henley Young, we don't pay anything else because we had already surrendered millage twelve or fifteen years earlier. So we, we, the city had paid twice to make sure that jail could operate. And I think that's what Councilman Stokes is saying. We've already done this. We've made our commitment. And yes, while there are state statutes that say that we should pay certain amounts, we've negotiated other resolutions. The jail is a concern. And the real key is they cannot have the number of people in the jail they have in the jail. When I left the county in January twenty twenty, they were housing about four hundred and fifty people a day. Now they're housing double that. Well, that's not a lack of funding from the city of Jackson. The people may come from the city, but that's not a lack of funding. So there's gotta be a sincere effort somewhere to manage the jail population, make sure that those cases are a priority to both the circuit judges and the district attorney's office so the people who sit in the jail are processed in a timely fashion. And the jail population for the population of Heinz County is way beyond comparison to national statistics. There are all sorts of experts that come in here and say, how do you house as many people as you do? You shouldn't be housing this many. So the real issues, as Mayor Horn pointed out, are gonna require various entities getting around the table and coming up with a solution. The answer is not counting, we need more money from the city. As much as we want to support them. And I'm with Councilman Stokes, whether they raise millage, they being the county, this year or in the future. As opposed to the people they have building them a jail now, I actually went to the National Institutes of Corrections. Councilman Stokes sent me there. I've got certified by the federal government in planning and building new jails. The biggest cost they have is gonna be the staffing of the jail, not the construction. And the year you move, you're paying twice because you don't pick up six hundred and fifty people in Raymond one day and put them at a new facility the next day. And so we keep hearing about a physical structure. The management plan to get into that physical structure and to maintain that. Councilman Parkinson, you ask us about making sure we're gonna service any equipment we get from Public Works. They have to do that for the jail. And so there are a lot of discussions that need to be had. I, I haven't been both counsel, legal counsel for the city and legal counsel for the county. Do not think the answer comes down to the city paying more money. I think there have to be other solutions. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
May I suggest, I know we got time limit on this meeting, that we maybe join to give the council members a chance to talk to the mayor. Mayor has ideas, how to budget and everything going. And for us to lobby each other to find out what we can. Because if we pass a lot of stuff and there's no money, that's not gonna be any appropriation. Just so we can, because all ideas out here are great and clerks often give us a copy of everything. And then we talk to the mayor, talk to each other. Then we'll meet Monday, we'll be ready to take some motions and get closer and closer to the final budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually agree with that. So with respect to that, I'm gonna table item two. I do believe that every council member gave some valid input today and I really do want to give the administration time to consider those items. I will say on the record, though, that I am not in favor of merging the clerk's offices. And so if we're gonna trim the fat, we need to start in other areas first because everybody is serving a major purpose here. Is there anything else to come before this body? Hearing none, we are adjourned.